Morning, everyone. Welcome to the Civic Day City Council on December 5th, 2024 at 10:43 a.m. Can we get a call to order?
Wood.
Here.
Culver.
Here.
Fangman.
Here.
Tripoli.
Here.
Even.
Here.
Hartford.
Here.
Snell Grove.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, we will now move on to the offering of prayer done by Councilwoman Braylon Evens, followed by the pledge. Please stand.
Yes, we're gonna do a Hail Mary in the name of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Hail Mary.
Full grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed are thou among women, and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for us sinners, now and at the hour of our death. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move on to our special presentations, which are proclamations by Baden High School, then followed by Hamilton High School.
Mrs. Enderly, may you please come to the floor. We would like to offer you this proclamation today. Whereas, Hamilton City Council and city administration would like to give recognition and show appreciation to Mrs. Beth Enderly, a teacher at Stephen T. Baden High School, which she has dedicated her life to enhancing the lives of students through Catholic education and instilling positive values in her students, which has enriched their lives and helped them achieve their best. And whereas, Mrs. Enderly has dedicated 25 years teaching students, providing a strong and valuable education in both public and private schools and with all ranges. And whereas, Mrs. Enderly throughout her teaching career has received several awards, one being the Christ the Teacher Award. And whereas, Mrs. Enderly spent and completed her high school education at Baden High School, where she then went on to pursue a higher education at the University of Dayton, Wright State University, and John Carroll University, where she has obtained a bachelor's and master's degree in education and a master's degree in theology. And whereas, Mrs. Enderly and her strive to teach and share faith develops bonds with the students and gets to know them individually as people. Her openness, welcome arms, and constant positive attitude allow students to grow and be themselves. She's able to get the students to grow among each other, develop relationships, and make a stronger community with one another. And now therefore, I Connor Wood, Civic Day Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and members of the Hamilton City Council hereby proclaim the 6th of December as 2024 as Mrs. Enderly Day in the City of Hamilton, Ohio. Congratulations, Mrs. Enderly, for truly making a difference in the lives of her students through her constant hard work, the installation of good morals, and a passion for faith education.
Thank you. Thanks.
Mrs. Enderly, would you like to say a few words?
Um, I'll say something really quick. Um, I just wanna say thank you to all of you guys for the proclamation. Thank you to the city that I've lived in my whole life. Thank you for the place that I love to work and be at every day that I was a student at, and then welcomed me back as a teacher. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Enderly.
Can we have Mrs. Huber, please, come up here? Whereas, Hamilton City Council and city administration would like to give recognition and show appreciation to Miss Suzanne Huber, a Hamilton High School math teacher who has shown commitment to and compassion for the students and staff at Hamilton High School, has enhanced the educational environment at Hamilton High School, and whereas, Mrs. Huber attended Fairfield High School in Fairfield, Ohio, and then Tuscaloosa University in Greenville, Tennessee, where she graduated in 2009. She then went on to graduate school at the University of Cincinnati in Ohio and received a degree in curriculum and instruction. She is currently studying at Western Governors University for a master's degree in secondary math education and will be finished in the spring. Whereas, Mrs. Huber moved after teaching for four years in Knoxville, Tennessee, to Taylor, where she taught for one year, and then landed at Hamilton High School, where she has been teaching for 10 years and overall is celebrating her 15th year of teaching this year. Whereas, Mrs. Huber has coached varsity girls golf and varsity chess at Hamilton High School in her past and plans to bring back the girls' golf program to Hamilton High School in the 25 through 26 school year. She will dedicate her time to these girls to enjoy the sport just as much as she does as well as be the best they can be. Whereas, Mrs. Huber has two children, Gracie and Bowman, and a husband, Mr. Huber, whom she loves to spend quality time with. They enjoy spending weekends and time off on frequent camping trips with family and friends. Whereas, Mrs. Huber delights in her job as she gets to wake up each morning and come see her students learn and grow. Whereas, Mrs. Huber interacts with each of her students, including both former and present, and checks in to assure they are doing well academically, physically, and mentally. Whereas, Mrs. Huber enjoys establishing new relationships with students each year, encouraging her students in the classroom to learn new skills on problem solving, and seeing how far they have come when their time in her classroom is up. Whereas, Mrs. Huber ensures her students stay on track and are able to access their full potential while in her classroom. Now therefore, I Hazel Culver, Civic Day Vice Mayor of the City of Hamilton, Ohio, and members of Hamilton City Council, do hereby proclaim the 5th of December, 2025, as Mrs. Suzanne Huber Day in the City of Hamilton, Ohio. Congratulations on making an impact in students' lives for the pursuit of knowledge and scholarship. Would you like to say something?
Recognition and education is something that teachers don't always receive very often, and I am truly appreciative to be with here, here with you all today. Some of the students in this room can account for the fact that I didn't know what a proclamation was until my husband Casey Huber, who teaches social studies at the high school, explained it to me. This is one of the highest honors that you all could give me, and I'm extremely grateful and humbled to accept it. I'd like to thank these wonderful students at Hamilton High School for proclaiming an entire day in my honor. I hope this means I'm excused from grading for at least 24 hours, and I also assume this means free Diet Cokes for life. No, maybe? Being a math teacher, I've spent the last 15 years teaching students how to solve equations and dive deeper into the mathematical processes, holding my students accountable, and truly never giving you a day off for math. I can honestly say the most rewarding feeling is seeing students succeed. I love watching you all shine on the court, in the pool, on the stage, or wherever you, your passions take you. Whether it's nailing a perfect throw or perfecting a calculus exam, I'm truly there for it all, cheering you on from the sidelines or sometimes just from my classroom. To my students, past and present, thank you for letting me a part of, be a part of your journeys. Even when you leave my classroom, I hope you know that I'm still in your corner celebrating your wins and your hard-earned B pluses that we all know could have been As if you'd just shown your work. Finally, I'm truly honored by this recognition, and I will try my best to live up to it by continuing to support my students in and out of the classroom. Thank you.
All right, we will now move on to the audience as citizens. Individuals who wish to make comments regarding items scheduled on the agenda and not on the agenda may speak now during this part. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Kathleen Strautman, 4513 Tyler Snell Drive. Um, there's a growing problem of homelessness in Hamilton, and currently we only have shelters for women and children. Are you going to address this problem for the majority of the people who don't have shelters, which are actually men with homelessness on the streets, by implementing a new shelter?
Uh, yes, we are aware of the issue. I'm curious if our city manager wants to speak about this.
Um, we will contact with our state staff and get a report back to you. Thank you.
Hello, Simone Bradberry, 94 Beckett Drive. Um, I see on this legislation that you are interested in opening a teen space. So I wanted to ask, one, what would be the cost of that? Two, how would we get those funds? And three, would that space be more like a, I get, for lack of better words, a more teenage, like Boys and Girls Club or Community Center? Could someone elaborate, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, currently, the funding for this project size would be around $250,000. Um, but with this partnering, partnering with local youth organizations is also something we are looking into as a possibility. And then what was your other question?
Um, would the teen spaces be like, I guess, more like Boys and Girls Club for people our age, or is that, how would that like work? What would, what would, what would be some of the activities provided by these teen spaces?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, this facility would be kind of a place where local bands can come, um, and there would be like food and beverages. It's basically just like a hangout area for teenagers to go that's safe and like make sure that teens are able to be accounted for in this community.
Okay. All right, I have another question about number seven on the list, where you were mentioned, um, oh, I'm sorry. It's numbers, um... Is this mentioned? Um, about installing a roundabout? So I just wanted to ask, um, again, the funding, and two, I notice a lot of roundabouts in Hamilton. They are there, but they, there's nothing that they're also providing, because I know a lot, um, can have like something that beautifies it, like flowers or whatnot. Will that also be included? Because I wanna make sure that as great as Hamilton is, it also provides something also great to look at as we travel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, when we were looking at this roundabout, we weren't necessarily looking at, um, our main focus wasn't really looking at how to, um, like kinda decorate it, for lack of better words. Uh, our main focus was just kinda implementing it because of the, where it would be located. It's at such a dangerous intersection. Um, our hope was really just to get it implemented and then focus on the other things after.
All right. And now that that's mentioned to you, is that something you're now interested in?
I've always, I live around there, like five minutes from that road, and I'm driving past it all the time. And I think it's a necessity to make that, if we can't make it a roundabout, to at least make it a safer intersection.
Right.
Because it is very dangerous, and it is used a lot. And that is something that's always been in the back of my mind that needs to be fixed.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Madeline Wagenfield. I reside at 75 Hermay Drive, and I'm aware of the resolution authorizing and directing the programming of a mural that represents both Hamilton High School and Baden High School located at the Jack Kirsch Underpass on High Street. Just out of pure curiosity, what makes the Jack Kirsch Underpass the ideal location for this mural?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, that's my ideal location for the mural, because I drive past that place a lot when I'm coming back into Hamilton, whenever I leave Hamilton for something. And I feel like that's one of like the first things that like visitors see while they drive past the underpass, and the wall is just blank and white. And I feel like if we beautified it, it would make it more welcoming while you were driving into Hamilton and onto High Street and Main Street.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Luffler. I live at 5678 Olberger Drive. I, on the, on Columbia Bridge on High Street and B Street, I had been traveling across Columbia Bridge going on Main, and I had been stuck at that traffic signal for far too long, easily about seven, eight minutes possibly. And could that, could the signal be changed from, from holding a red light for probably, what was that, four cycles or so? Be changed, be lowered down to a more reasonable amount that would be more in line with traditional traffic signals?
All right. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I'm very sorry this has happened to you. It is definitely something that we will look into, and I will bring a report back to you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, my name's John Bentham, um, 4,000 New London Road. Uh, I just wanna understand, uh, why, why do y'all keep trying to raise our taxes here? All right? I've seen several tax levies on, uh, the ballots recently, uh, increasing, I don't even know what it's for. All right, can you just kinda explain, walk me through, like what, what are you, what are you trying to do?
Well, we have to raise taxes because we are, there are projects in the state of Hamilton that we need to raise money for that'll benefit everyone.
I don't think it benefits me, but...
If you use, uh, facilities, then yes, it will benefit you.
I do drive on the road. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Olivia Kleffker at 408 North F Street, and, um, my complaint is about the number of cats that are always on the neighborhood, like on the streets around my neighborhood, like running in front of my cars. And I feel like it's definitely a threat to the safety of those cats and also to the safety specifically of the drivers that are running around, so...
Mr. Mayor? Yes. There was recently, uh, recently, the Director of Health, uh, came by the City Council and stated that they are actually working on a program for that, uh, to find, or to help, help shelter homeless dogs and cats. Uh, they'll give them veterinarian support, uh, so they'll ensure that they're not spreading disease, and they'll also attempt to find them a home. So, we're working on that right now.
All right, thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Johnny Hamilton. I reside at 145 Main Street, and I just have an issue with all the potholes that I see in the city. As you can tell by the groan from the audience, they have issues with this as well. So I know that we've done streets levies, we are getting grant funding, but what's taking you all so long to fix these roads?
Uh, it's coordination. We are coordinating right now to fix these roads, like you said, all these levies that, uh, the gentleman over there had an issue with. We are gaining all the money and then coordinating with our road services to get these fixed.
Okay, I got, uh, one more, one more issue. Um, you know the spray grounds over by, uh, Markham Park over there, the spray grounds there? Well, I use that water to make some tea, and I got a infection. So who's gonna pay my medical bills?
Were you the one that decided to get the water?
Well, I didn't see a sign that told me I couldn't drink it.
We will work on that, get a sign to make sure, tell people not to drink the public water that's around the ground.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we will now move on to our agenda, which includes our legislation items. Is there a motion? Mr. Mayor? Yes. Uh, I motion that we move on. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will now move on to our new legislation. Number one is the addition of pedestrian signs.
First item on the agenda is a resolution authorizing and directing the addition of flashing pedestrian signs at the intersection of High Street and Seventh Street crosswalk in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, proposal made by Connor, Mayor Connor Wood.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the resolution be adopted, that the addition of flashing pedestrian signs is adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second.
So, my idea was to include pedestrian signs as, some of Hamilton's intersections are ranked very poorly in overall safety, and, uh, High Street and Seventh Street is actually one of our worst-ranked intersections overall. So I want to include pedestrian signs to increase pedestrian safety so citizens can feel safe walking around our city. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Uh, how do we plan to pay for this? So, from our 2024 City of Hamilton budget, there is an infrastructure renewal program, which the projected revenue leaves $507,000 left over from our projected budget. So I've planned to take off $3,430 from that to pay for this. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Do you think that's the most beneficial way to use this extra budgeted money? I do believe so, as is, uh, the, where the money's at, it is in the same area as, uh, pedestrian signs, and I believe that pedestrian safety is very important in our city. Any more discussion? Uh, can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
We have new resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We will now move on to our second piece of resolu, uh, yeah, second piece of legislation, which is the organ, organization of an event in Hamilton.
Item number two, a resolution authorizing and directing the organization of a Taste of Hamilton event in the City of Hamilton, proposal by Vice Mayor Hazel Culver.
Mr. Mayor?
One second. Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so my idea, um, for this Taste of Hamilton is that we would give local restaurants in Hamilton the chance to set up a table of whatever type of sample food items they sell at the restaurant to, um, showcase their business to visitors and citizens of Hamilton at an event. Um, hopefully, it would be held in Markham Park, because that's like, kind of like, I don't know, a lot of events are held there in Hamilton. Um, if it wasn't a standalone event, then we could help, hold it in conjunction with either the flea market or some, the Hamilton Flea, some other event that's at Markham Park already. Um, the festival could have, would have the food booths, and then also, um, it could have, we could have live music. Um, yeah, that's pretty much the idea.
How would you plan on advertising this?
Um, so a way that we could advertise is through social media, um, all the various types, like Facebook or Instagram. Um, we also could post it on the Hamilton website to try and allow, um, visitors and citizens to know about that. And then also, I was driving through Hamilton yesterday, and I realized they had this big, I don't know, like screen that was showcasing all of the Hamilton Christmas events that are happening, so we could try and put it on there, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What types of companies do you think would come to these events and have their food available for people?
Um, so I have a list of possible restaurants that could participate. We would want mostly, like, local restaurants, not chain restaurants in Hamilton to participate. So that could include like Tono, Wings on Brookwood, Billy Yanks, Fretboard, Basil, Taqueri Iguanahato, Gina's, Neil's Barbecue, Casual Pint, All Ate Up, Smoochies, Merchi, True West, Richard's Pizza, El Mariachi, Shooter's, The Hub, and Agave and Rye.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would the budget of a project like this be?
Um, so the budget would be around $20,000 to $30,000, and this would include the cost of all the tables and chairs and canopies we'd need to set up the event, um, if we paid for a band to come and perform. Um, and then also, the labor, we would want, um, I thought a good idea would be, if we could, we would have volunteered students come from Hamilton, Baden's, like National Honor Society and Student Council to help set up for it, but if we didn't have enough help from them, then we could also pay for some volunteers or people to come set it up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would restaurants, uh, participating in this event need food trucks?
Um, no, they would not need food trucks, because it, they would just be at a table, and they could set up their samples on the table.
Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We'll move on to our third piece of legislation, which is grant applications for improved signage in Hamilton.
A resolution authorizing and directing the filing of grant applications through the Ohio Department of Transportation to seek funding for improved signage for public parking locations around the city, proposal made by City Councilmember Lillian Fangman.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second this motion.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe that Hamilton should install signs to each lot, so that, and these signs would be placed at the entrance and state if the law is for public parking and whether it is free or has a cost for parking. This will help to ensure that people know where they are and aren't allowed to park, and it would prevent cars from being towed. There should also be a few of the traffic control trailers installed to indicate where the nearest public parking is located, so that people aren't just driving all over looking for parking. And I believe that this would help to bring more people to events in Hamilton, because they wouldn't have to worry about if they're gonna be able to find a spot to park, and if they're gonna get towed, because they don't know where they're allowed to park at.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I was wondering if, um, would you also like, think about adding some parking lots, like more parking lots into the city, too?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think that's a good thing to look into, but we are, we already have a lot of parking. It's just a matter of, like, people don't know where they are allowed to park at. And I think that once we added more signs and seen if the parking improved, we could still look into seeing if we needed to add more parking spots.
How would you plan to pay for the signs?
We could get funding from the Ohio Department of Transportation, and they usually provide grants and funding opportunities for projects like this, so I think that they would probably help pay. And it would only cost around the max $50,000 for this, because that's to install two traffic control trailers and to just get signs to put in the parking lots.
Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
We have resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We'll move on to our fourth piece of resolution, which is about the acquisition of property in Hamilton.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to investigate the possibility of acquiring the property located at 1366 Main Street for the purpose of converting the property into a teens' club use, proposal by City Councilmember Isabel Tripoli.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The implementation for the teens' club in Hamilton, Ohio, would be, and would cater to the teenage demographic. For teens' club, it would be a facility for all teens to go, it would be a safe environment to be in. It would implement local bands, it would be, and would offer food and beverages. The age demographic would be around 14 to 18 years old. This facility would be built on 1366 Main Street, where the current Texas Roadhouse is, seeing as though their goal is to eventually move their restaurant near Meyer, which is where the old Golden Corral used to be. Um, and then this is also a popular location in Hamilton, which would be a nice centralized location.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How would you fund the, um, food and beverages, uh, that's put on at this event?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, as previously discussed, we will have a budget, and we will be partnering with other organizations, um, and we could probably get, um, some local businesses, just like with Hazel's, um, to kind of provide some food, um, but also, we'd probably just have our own food menu.
Is there any other discussion? Mr. Mayor? Yes. Can you restate, uh, what businesses this is near? What, where you plan to put it at? Sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, this would be at the Texas Road
This would be at the Texas Roadhouse, right on Main Street, so it'd be, like, right around Walmart, like, all, like, those main areas.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How would you just ensure that it's safe for teens that are showing up?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is already a pretty safe driving location, so, and multiple teenagers drive past it all the time, especially on game day nights, so this is already a safe location for teenagers to go.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would there be, like, parents or a supervisor at this teen center? Because, like, you can't really, I feel like, just, like, have a bunch of teens go there and then just, like, buy them, like, you know what I mean? Like, how would you go about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There would be adults supervision, as well as the people that are running the business, and probably also some security.
Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
No.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, six to one.
We will now move on to our fifth piece of legislation, which is about promoting a small business in Hamilton.
A resolution promoting a small business night for local businesses located in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, proposal made by City Councilmember Braylon Even.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I believe that, obviously, Hamilton is made up of many local businesses, and I believe that this event would provide a night where local businesses will become informed of the citizens, and that the citizens will become informed of the local businesses throughout the city. So this will allow for growth in local businesses and will help build community.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What will the cost be for this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So right now, the only thing that we would really have to provide is, I was thinking, like, bands, like, local bands to perform here, because we would have it at Markham Park. So it's basically going to be a big open space, and then there'll be food trucks from local businesses that'll put food out, and also local restaurants could put their clothes out in, like, tents and everything. And so we said that the budget would probably be, like, $1,500.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How does this differ from the Taste of Hamilton idea that was previously proposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So these, they're pretty similar events, obviously, but while she focused more on, like, the food aspect of it, I feel like also there's more, like, restaurants that are local, too. And I feel like with that, I'm sorry, I don't mean restaurants, I meant, like, clothing brands and everything that are local, too, so I feel like this will also help get that out there, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. How is this not similar to the Hamilton Flea?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I see that these are similar, yes, but I just believe that this will, like, I feel like this will help build community more, especially because, like, if you have, like, a local band and, like, businesses going around there, I just feel like personally that this will help build community more.
Do you see this as, like, multiple days, so, like, people have, like, more opportunities to come out and see new businesses?
Uh, yes.
Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
No.
Fangman?
No.
Tripoli?
No.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, four to three.
We will now move on to our sixth piece of legislation, which is about the inclusion of a roundabout in the City of Hamilton.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing and directing the construction of road improvements, including a roundabout to the New London and Ross Hanover intersection, proposal by City Councilmember Connor Hartford.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So when we were proposed with an idea to implement something in the City of Hamilton, whether it was an event or a change, this immediately came to mind with the popularity of this intersection and also the dangers that it presents, especially coming from Hamilton, coming off of New London Road onto Ross Hanover. It's a very sharp turn, and if you implement a roundabout, it will make, it'll improve traffic flow as well as make it a lot safer.
Do you have any, like, data on the danger of the intersection? Any statistics?
I don't have any specific statistics, but I do know there's a lot of construction and/or wrecks that do happen there, mainly because of miscommunications between drivers.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So as you might know, there is a lot of construction going on down by, like, Millville, and this is kind of making it hard for people to get around that area of Hamilton. So if we're putting construction then on this road, what is it, like, Ross Millville or something?
Ross Hanover.
Ross Hanover. How would you, how are you going to go about, like, managing the detour route?
There are other ways that you can get, it would just take, it'd probably be a five-minute detour that you can go, avoiding that intersection, but it will take a little longer.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How long do you think it would take to install a roundabout? Like, how long would the road be closed for?
I don't know an exact date, just because it also, I mean, it depends on the intersection, but I'd say, I don't know, estimated guess, six months.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you plan to decorate this roundabout, as was previously mentioned, and ensure that it fits the environment around it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Once we get the, get the okay on this roundabout, I think that can be proposed at a later meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Is decorating the roundabout not also part of building the roundabout? Would those be separate funds, or would that be part of the creation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It was not included when I was looking at the funds for this roundabout. The main, main purpose of me proposing this roundabout was for safety, so it was not, not included, no.
Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We'll move on to our seventh piece of, piece of legislation, which is about the installation of train crossing calculators.
A resolution authorizing and directing the installation of train crossing calculators at every railroad crossing and to improve railroad crossings to install quiet zones for train passing through the city, proposal made by City Councilmember Jerry Snell Grove.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second this motion.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I previously came here in 2019 to also propose this idea. There would be, there's 29 railroad crossings going through the City of Hamilton, and with the installment of Spooky Nook and the continued growth of the city, train crossings are starting to become more and more of an issue, whether it's safety, noise pollution, or space in general. My proposed idea is that you would add a calculator to every railroad crossing that would estimate how long a train would be passing through that crossing. So this would help emergency vehicles in knowing if they should turn around and go the other way. This would help new residents who are here for Spooky Nook or other events to know how to get around the city better, and it would also fit the FRA approval of quiet zones where trains do not have to blare their horns through neighborhoods.
How would these train crossing calculators work?
Yeah, so there'd be an electromagnetic field put around the railroad crossing, and it would calculate how long and how fast the train is, and then it would then estimate the amount of time that the train would be going through the crossing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would this sign look like? Like, would it be big enough that cars that were in the back of a line would be able to see how much time the train is going to take?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, so these would be set up, something like stoplights, or even like a board that's on the side of the street, so it would be available to be seen from anywhere, light up at night, it'd be very noticeable, like a blinking stop sign or like a flashing red light.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would be the cost of a project this size?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So my suggested budget would be around one and a half million to $2 million. This would be paid for through state grants, and I believe that it could also not only help Ohio, but it could help nationally as well. This is not just an issue in the City of Hamilton.
Is there any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We will move on to our eighth piece of legislation, which is about the inclusion of a local botanical garden.
A resolution authorizing and directing the development of a local botanical garden and/or observatory in the former CH and D train station in the City of Hamilton, Ohio, proposal by City Clerk Colin Eilerman.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that this be adopted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So I believe the institution of this observatory would bring some extra light to the city and some color. In winter, we put up Christmas lights around the City of Hamilton, but I noticed that in spring and summer, we don't really have much we do, that we do to brighten the city up. I believe that the institution of this would bring in more tourists and viewers. I also believe it would be a nice local spot to just sit down, relax, and view nicer flowers or greenery that you don't typically see around the city.
How would you go about paying this?
I did some looking through the budget book, and there was about $40,000 set aside for engineering and other improvements and restorations to the city, because in order to do this, we would need to restore the train station right down the road, which would be about $40-ish thousand as a rough estimate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would the maintenance for this botanical garden look like and paying those maintenance people?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For maintenance, we would, we would restore the building down the road, and we'd need to dig up a little bit of the concrete in order to institute the actual garden. As of paying, like, are you asking about workers, like, construction, or just employees at the garden?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was referring to more, so when the garden is already in place, and just the upkeep of it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the upkeep of the garden would be mainly, it could be either volunteers, because I know there are some local greenery organizations, like the Green Thumb Organization. There is also, you could have city workers, like, local people, or just people who want to volunteer to work the gardens, those, they would all upkeep the garden, and it would only need to be upkept and watered in spring and summer, and then a little less maintenance towards the winter seasons.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How can you ensure that this spot is the right spot for a greenery? How do you know that the plants will grow and that it'll be a nice spot?
Well, the spot right down the road, the CH and D station, has been out of use for about 92 years, so that we, right now, we have nothing going on right there, and the spot is, the soil it lays on is fertile and good, and good for growing plants and other greenery. And as of what I've researched into it, I see no issue with the upkeep of plants and greenery in the area.
Any other discussion? Can we get a roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We'll move on to our ninth piece of legislation, which is the inclusion of a mural in Hamilton.
A resolution authorizing and directing the program of a mural that represents both Hamilton High School and Baden High School, located at the Jack Kirsch Underpass on High Street, proposal made by City Manager Michaela Platt.
Is there a motion this resolution be adopted?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I motion that this resolution be adopted.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So as I said earlier, while residents and visitors are driving back into Hamilton and driving onto Main Street, they drive under the Jack Kirsch Underpass, and the wall is just bland. So I think that if we put a mural there while you drive onto Main Street, it will just be more welcoming. So my idea is that this project will be done by the art students at both Baden and Hamilton High Schools, and basically, we can send out a Google form where these students are able to submit their design ideas for the mural, and then after the students submit their ideas, we can choose, like, what design we want to paint on the mural, and then we can get volunteers from both schools and paint this mural. And not only will this mural be, like, beautifying our city, but I also think that it will be helping to get more students involved, and it'll be able to foster their civic pride.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How will we ensure the safety of these volunteers and students painting the mural?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So obviously, that road is a very busy road, so I was thinking that while the students are painting, that the lane closest to, like, where they're painting could be closed, and like I said earlier, it is a busy road, so maybe when they're painting, like, we decide what days they paint, and then the hours could be between, like, 12 and 3, when the traffic isn't as crazy, so that a lane closure wouldn't upset a lot of people.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would the transportation to get to this site for the volunteers be? Like, would parents drop off? Would there be a bus? I'm just curious.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was thinking more of, like, parents drop off, because it would be on a weekend or over like the summer, not during school hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would the cost be?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the biggest cost would be buying paint and that would be around two hundred fifty to three hundred dollars for like fifteen buckets of paint. And then we would also have to purchase like the paint pans and the rollers and just like all the supplies needed to paint the mural. So I was thinking that maybe we could get like a five hundred dollar grant from a group like Seventeen Strong or the Rotary Club to fund this mural.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Would you have an adult willing to supervise while people are painting so it's not just a bunch of kids out there painting on the street by themselves?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, I was thinking maybe the art teachers at Hamilton and Baden, if they're willing to volunteer and help the students paint. Because we already have a class like this at Hamilton, so, and they already paint murals around our school. So maybe that teacher would be able to come out and help students.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How can you ensure that the city of Hamilton will be okay with painting this wall? We can ask residents, but it isn't like a direct issue with people. So it isn't like directly a conflict. And the sensors, obviously, it seems like a group of students at Hamilton, several want to do this. I think it'd be supported.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Also, there are already other murals around our city in different areas. So I feel like the people would not have an issue with it.
Any other discussion? Can we go to roll call vote?
Wood?
Yes.
Culver?
Yes.
Fangman?
Yes.
Tripoli?
Yes.
Even?
Yes.
Hartford?
Yes.
Snell Grove?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, seven to zero.
We will now move on to the audience of the city manager. If the city manager would like to speak, they may speak now.
Thank you. I would like to take this time to talk about some of the big successes that Hamilton had last year, at the end of last year. So Hamilton High School offers Butler Tech programs for their students so that they can experience, have experience in the field that they want to pursue when they graduate, which this program basically just makes it easier for students to get a job in the trade that they want to pursue right when they graduate so that they don't have to go to college and get education there.